Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here at our noon, 1:00, I mean, meeting today. I think we have everybody logged in. Everybody OK? You're logged in? All right, great. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Wes.
I was... Go ahead, Teri, second.
Second.
Seconded by Teri. Any discussion?
I might say we... Some point down in the agenda, it might come up. We might have to have another board meeting somewhere in December after the regular board meeting. And so, I don't know if we want to put that on the agenda now, looking like the week of the 12th would be like the Wednesday of the 14th, the Thursday of the 15th. It's well advanced of any holiday.
December, yes. Adding a second meeting in December.
Oh, I don't know if you want to make that an agenda item or we just do it informally and you'll just schedule it then when you need to.
Yeah. Do we want to make an agenda item and then discuss that? Yeah?
Sure.
OK. Nope, just an info. Well, to add a meeting? Are you looking to add an action item to add a meeting then?
Add an action item here.
Yeah.
Setting a date.
Setting a date for a meeting.
Pending.
OK.
Any what we have on December 12th.
OK.
Let's just leave it at that, yeah. Many things are fluid right now, we need to...
That's happening.
So are you amending the...
Yes. So can I have a friendly amendment then? Are you amending your motion? Yep. OK.
Make the motion with that addition.
And that would be a 7.4?
Correct.
Approval of a second meeting in December.
Yep. The second's OK with that? Any other discussion? OK, so Brian, approving the amended agenda. Do you need me to do something different?
Do you mind advancing to the...
Yeah, I don't mind at all.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, everyone, I was back-to-back meetings before this, so I'm just getting my brain in order, so thanks for flowing with me today. OK, so that was moved by Wes and then seconded by Teresa. We've added that 7.4 approval of an additional meeting in December after the 12th. Oh, OK. There still am not with... What would I tell my students to do? Take a big breath, Kelly. OK, Brian, thanks. All right, we're ready for the vote. All right, Deb, would you read the mission statement for us?
Sure. "The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world."
Yo. From out there. All right, this is a time for board members to, and the administration, to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered conflict of interest. Brian, do we have any today?
We have none.
OK, thank you. All right, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board concerning issues that are not on our agenda today. Per the policy, presentations should be as brief as possible. And I do have Kylie Kramer from the Brookings School District Foundation as someone who would like to speak. Thanks, Kylie. Please just introduce yourself and then just make sure that the green light's on and you got the microphone on.
Perfect. I am Kylie Kramer, and I am the Director of the Brookings School District Foundation. So I wanted to thank you, of course, for the work that you guys do on behalf of our learner staff and ultimately our community. And also, thank you for the opportunity to connect here today. Like I said, I'm the Director of the Brookings School District Foundation. We are a relatively new foundation, and our mission is to enhance the opportunities and experiences of all learners and staff within our district. Currently, we are focusing on two main initiatives, and those are our senior scholarships and our impact grants. So the senior scholarships are pretty self-explanatory. Those are scholarships for our graduating seniors who are attending post-secondary education. The impact grants are new, and what those are is those are funds that teachers will be able to apply for. So either impactful or innovative things that they would like to bring into their classrooms. So what we are doing on Day of Giving this year is we are focusing our fundraising and our awareness on our impact grants. Because of that, we are really focusing on trying to raise funds for those. The spring is when we will launch our first round of teacher impact grants, and any teacher in the district is eligible to apply for funds that will then benefit the learners in their classrooms. So it's a really unique opportunity to enhance what we already provide. This year, the Day of Giving is on Tuesday, November 29th. It's also called Giving Tuesday, but in South Dakota, we've changed to kind of to South Dakota Day of Giving, and South Dakota Gives is the organization that oversees it. One of their challenges this year is to have 100% board support, so meaning 100% of the board donates on the day of giving. So the Brookings School District Foundation Board has committed to 100% participation in making a difference in the lives of our learners through making a donation that day. And so, we in turn are asking for the support of the school board to have 100% participation that day as well. And so, we would love to see 100% participation from both the Foundation Board and the school board. And so, I just am curious if you guys are up for the challenge.
Kylie, I brought my check because I'm going to be out of town.
Geez!
So I will give it to you, and you can cash it on the Day of Giving.
Perfect. Yeah. The easiest way on the day... You can either send... Thank you, Deb. You can either...
Tell us more.
Send a check.
Wes is going to write a really big check, he told me, right before this meeting.
Perfect, because we can do lots of really great things if we have more resources.
Yes, no, thank you for doing that.
BrookingsBobcatFoundation.org, there is a button to donate online, or if you would like to drop a check off at the administration building, they have been gracious enough to hold on to mail and things like that for me, or else if you want to send the donation to the admin building as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all you do.
Appreciate that. I did just want to take a little presidential privilege and just have our Bobcat community do a moment of silence if we could. We did have a death of a middle school student, and so something that our community is grappling with, and so I just wanted to let us go ahead and take a moment to just... Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, we are going to go on to a discussion of scope and funding of our building projects. And I believe we have a handout from Wes. Do all of the board members have that tonight? All right. And so Wes and Teresa, I would assume, are kind of going to be helping lead this conversation, and I can pop in from Facilities Committee as well. And Brian has it on the board. Thank you. Want to go ahead and start, Wes?
First of all, our Finance Committee met... So this is a product of our work. A colleague on the Finance Committee is Teresa. My colleague on the Finance Committee is Teresa, and we also had staff there, Dr. Willert and Laura were there. So we went through the numbers, and this is... You have to understand that some of these numbers are fluid and some are very firm because some things are... So we'll just go down the worksheet, and I'll answer questions. Brian's available to answer questions, Teresa as well. Some of this has been available and circulated among board members, and... But, you know, the clock kept ticking, and I'm not sure all of you were able to get it, so... OK, let's just start with item line number one. This is the bond proceeds that we sold in the summer. We received the proceeds in August, and that's a firm number. It is in the bank, and we're getting interest in it on that money as it's invested, and we will see that number again later then. Item two is the food service transfer to capital projects. This specifically is available cash that's available and probably go to the Midary Kitchen project, which is... We need to get some approval at the state level, but this is not out of line in terms of the resources that we can use for the project. And then, three, capital outlay certificates issued. This is yet to be determined. This is a number that's varied over the course of time. A couple years ago, we were looking at 13 to 15 million. These now, to remind our viewers, that these taxes are already part of the capital outlay structure, the levy. And so, this is not a new levy. However, the amount may vary based upon what would come in with our maximum guaranteed price. And so, again, this number is varied. Likely, we'll be issuing bonds, maybe even as early as February, and we might do it in a couple installments, but over the course of time, maybe 10 million, 10 million, and whatever we need at the end to do the project. And so, we're using a number of 25,161,650 there as an estimate. Again, this may vary. Then five, six, and seven lines really flow into line eight, and that is the interest, as I referred to above, in the bond sales. That's its interest that we're projecting to accumulate during the project until we actually have to pay the contractors and other fees and services that we... This is an estimate that Brian did, and as he said, this can vary based upon interest rates and the cash flow we need to for the projects. Then, number nine is a number that we've been looking at, which is cash balance from the capital outlay fund. This might vary, a couple hundred thousand. This is probably, in my mind, is a conservative number in terms of investing current funds into the project on just a cash flow basis. Matter there is, the cash flow, the cash has to be there so that when June 30th rolls around and you have fund balance, that you have enough fund balance to pay the expenses until tax levies come in at the end of October. And so, it's kind of a planning number, so to speak. Then, item number 10 would be the total of resources. Instead of revenue, I like to use the word resources. This is projected resource available for the Hillcrest Midary Project. The number there, 65,612,000. Now, the costs of 65,612,000 is a fluid numbers. Excuse me for using it again, but I can think of 10 things, just as I sat here earlier, of things that vary. Square footage that's added, square footage that's subtracted, square footage that's changed out. Here, at our last meeting, we had a classroom that we basically decided we're going to use that square footage in the planning for our special needs programs. And so, that's changing out some square footage, and that's, in this case, it probably adds cost, but in other cases, we know that it made costs go down. So there's various, various... And then, of course, we're in a bidding process, and so this is an estimate by our architect, supervised by our architect, and the... For maximum guaranteed price, and this, you know, their inflation has been high. We don't need to discuss it, but we know that inflation has hit about every project and things that we touch as a consumer. And so, that takes us to balancing the 65,612 against the 65,606, and we're good to go. And we need board approval later on, that this is the financial plan so that we can start issuing contracts and making some decisions at administrative level regarding the projects. And so, the footnotes below are relevant and basically explain some of the matters that I just laid out for the project. And if you happen to answer any questions, these numbers, as I referenced, my colleague, board member Teresa Binkley, and I were in attendance, and basically said, this is what's important to communicate where we're at. There's things that probably will enter into the picture, and at that point in time, we'll bring to the board and say, OK, this is a new information or added information to the whole scope of what we're talking about. So with that, when we get to it, I would recommend, Teresa and I, as finance chair, would recommend approval of this financial plan, so at that point in time. So with that, I ask any questions?
Yep.
Brian, you got any more to add? You're welcome to. I'm sure you would have a lot to add because you've been digging into these numbers over the course of time.
They've been working hard.
But for this purpose, I think we're fit the... We needed to do to share this with the...
Additional questions from board members?
I had... I read through the, you know, minutes that we had from each of the meetings that you guys have held for building and facilities, and at one point, didn't it say that 60 million was going to be sort of our cap? So we reexamined that and decided that we can go up a little higher. OK, that's good, I think, but I wondered when I saw that, how that compared to the number you finalized. OK.
More, yeah. And I think we have details...
Every day it keeps getting more.
Details from architect to what some of these cost increases have been.
Right, yeah.
And of course, the urgency is, and some of the costs, some of the items like steel and concrete to get out, to bid as bid, because at certain time, you want to have your...
Order in.
Knowing what the costs are going to be.
Not in line.
And that it's available.
The other question I've been asked, are we still on time in terms of the timeline for construction? And I have stated that, yes, we are at this point, and so this should help speed that process along to make sure too that we're going to meet our goal of breaking ground this spring, right?
Yes.
We need to get this done so we can move to the next step. So our team has been pushing us to make sure that we have these numbers so that we can get in line for the bids. So that's really why we added the additional meeting, so we can get this approval, so we can get in line for the bids and can make sure that we're in a competitive bid market, and so the subs aren't taking jobs and aren't doing the things, and that we have the best bidding process that we can get, which is giving us...
Because there's urgency.
The urgency for the funding model, yes.
And I might add, there's urgency in all this because we want to be in the schools by start of school, and we referenced, in fall of '24. And this, the costs do include taking down two old schools, and Midary is about, all but about 14,000 square feet. So, and then, in this case, also, we have estimates in terms of what the utilities are, that's factored in here, what the utility costs, and other work that takes place before even poor start pouring concrete. So with that, I'm just going to wait for another question, and otherwise, we'll move and act on it at the appropriate time.
Wes, I have heard some concern about the increase of the capital outlay certificates, and we've talked about that from the Building Committee, we've talked about that from the Finance Committee, and so I don't know if we can provide any assurances to our teachers and our staff that that just would be a concern. It's something Wes has said, something I've said. We are committed to making sure these buildings are wonderful buildings. We are committed to getting these projects done in the best way possible, but we're also committed to making sure that our schools are functioning and operating with the things that they need to. So can you speak to that a little bit?
I would say that we... The budget that we don't have included here, but that we reviewed, includes maintaining our technology, our library, our maintenance, building and grounds maintenance, investment in our buses, which we did make investment last week, and other things that affect day-to-day operations. But with new, essentially, a lot of new facilities and renovated facilities, well, for instance, Midary and Dakota Prairie here are new, our maintenance repair number goes down. And whether it's dollar for dollar, I'm not going to represent that, but the work that Brian has done with staff is looking at the numbers, that we have adequate resources to continue our maintenance program. And some of that money that we're using for maintenance is going into the investment and through the bond payments, one. Two, we will get growth in our tax base over the next, and that's factored in. And there's some statutory limitations about how much we can, how much that can grow in terms of on paper relative to our tax inability, and it is what it is. And we factor that in too, and it's a kind of a 3% growth factor that is statutory, that should provide, so we've factored that in. So there's some variables out there, but to answer your question, I feel very comfortable. We, as a board, need to be, feel very comfortable that our capital outlay resources aren't mortgaged, is the only word I could think of, mortgaged and not be available for investment in our students and our programs.
Yes, I agree with Wes. The figures that Brian went through for the cash flow for capital outlay for next several years is I'm comfortable with, and you know, and I trust that those numbers will not influence or hamper our students' needs or things for good, positive education in our district.
Wes, can you remind me, does that 65,6 number have... Did we build in a contingency percentage in that?
Yes, and Brian can know.
Did we do a five...
Like 19% or something.
5%, 3%?
I believe Pierce had recommended 1.5%.
OK.
Contingency for us.
OK. For us, so, yeah, just to let the board be aware, in that 65 million number we have, I thought, was it higher, Chris? Do you remember at all? No. I thought we were at 2%. We'll get that number public and get that out, that we do have a contingency number built in there, so I haven't seen building projects be less than a contingency, but just to be aware that we do have a little bit of wiggle room in that number as well.
I said 19, I meant 1.9.
Oh, 1.9, OK. So 2% maybe wasn't a better number in there in my mind.
But at the end, through the process, any bid that come in better than expected, that flows back to the project and to our resource base, so we don't pay for... What's that add on the...
And that...
What's that? We pay for what we need.
And if there were any donations over time, that could come out of that finance component as well, and so that's something that we can all be aware of as well.
I would just thank you to the Finance Committee for working on that. Explained very well. I understand it, I can explain it to others, I think, after seeing this, and so that's very beneficial.
I would be... I would be respectful to the Construction Committee and those people who worked hard on the construction part, on designing the building, but didn't say that they've been respectful of costs and looking at things and what this might cost. Maybe not necessarily always with a dollar and cent sign, but in terms of the big macro picture of what we need for our best value. And so, I want to acknowledge that this is a good junction to do that, the Construction Committee and the staff support that goes with it, who they've met with us almost every meeting.
Yep, they've worked very hard.
This room.
Yeah, our teachers and principals are very financially aware, pushing us even harder than we want to be pushed to cut things back and cut things down and use the best use of our dollar, and so we've been really appreciative of that and our whole team as we've worked through. And Finance Committee has worked really hard to figure out how we can make these projects a reality, really, really hard. So thank you, Brian, for your leadership. Thank you, Wes and Teresa, for your hard work there.
Just a side note, I pulled up an email from Pierce on October 19th, and it says 2%. Someone had 1.5, but this one says 2%.
Good memory, Kelly, yes. I never remember things. OK, yeah, 2%.
I'm just going to add in there too, reading all the minutes from the Construction Committee, I'm impressed with all that has been done there, done and redone and done again, and just very thankful that everyone's so willing to put in the time and effort to get these buildings, the kind that we want to have for our learners in this district. So I want to thank them.
And still a lot more work to do. This is just the shell. It's great. All right, I think we can move on. So this is my fault that I was a little delayed on these school board goals, so I don't know if everybody needs to take a moment to just review that document. In blue are some additions that Deb had shared with some ideas of those goals. I'm just going to be frank, something that's been, I've been struggling with, with the school board goals this year is that we are really diving into the strategic planning process, and so we've been having all these conversations from a strategic planning direction, and so approving goals and doing these goals right now is, it's a good, I think we should do it, I think we should keep it in practice if the board wants to keep going. But I really look at us as setting the vision based on our strategic plan work, and I'm really happy with the work that has been done in those pillars and setting those forward. And so, I just wanted to get the board's reaction to that thought process, or if there were shorter-term things. I mean, to me, I'm like, we're all going to be aligning and moving in this direction of a strategic plan, and that's the goals that I would like to be looking at and setting. So I didn't mean to delay this, that has been on me, but just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
I was just a little... Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I don't know if we're getting the cart ahead of the horse or kind of confused, so if we set goals, but then we get the strategic plan, then does that change our goals, or are we doing a million different things? And I think that's one thing we don't want to do. I feel like there's been so many new things being thrown at our teachers and everything that, oh, here, we've got these goals, but now, whoops, this came in, and we're going to do these goals. I don't know, I was confused.
Yeah. I understand that too, and we're looking at the strategic plan. However, I think we need to just identify some things that we can work on, and maybe as the strategic plan becomes finalized, then we may have some new ideas for what we want to focus on. But I think that we, that from an accountability perspective, I think we should identify a few things that we want to take part, that we want to do right now or get going on right now. So that's just my perspective.
That come back January?
Yeah, it sounds like January. The strategic plan document.
It'll take some time to process that, digest that, so that, you know, that pushes it further down the road. So that's why I'm thinking we should have a couple of things, or, you know, we can narrow this down to a few things we want to work on.
And I feel comfortable with all the goals that we have set out there. I mean, communication has been something that we have been talking about all the time. We are working on our relationships. We are putting our strategic plan out there as a goal, and we just talked about all the fiscal responsibility items that we're working on. And so, I don't think these are misaligned from the pillars that were even developed from the Strategic Planning Committee. I think they're kind of in, I mean, if you really think about it, it was, you know, strengthening our relationships. We want people to work in the Brookings School District. We want teachers to come here and like their work here and feel cared for when they're here. That was one of those pillars that was put out from our strategic plan. Communication was drawn into every part of those pillars. The financial responsibility was put into those pillars as well. So it doesn't feel miss... I didn't mean to say that I felt misaligned from our strategic plan, I just...
And I think, you know, the ideas that I put in there were just some action steps because I think that's where we've been, and I'm a part of that in the past, our board. We had goals, but we didn't always have the action steps for how we're going to get there and weren't very specific about those action steps. We may have had them, but we didn't really articulate them very well. So these were just some ideas I threw out there. They're certainly not set in stone or anything that I think we have to do, but I am thinking with number four, with fiscally responsible, OK, today we shared what we're looking at in terms of the finance. I think we need to do more to inform the public about that because, you know, today... I think we need to do more to inform the public about that because, you know, today there's probably not a lot of people tuning in to hear what we've got in store. So, you know, I know the newspaper will probably do a great job of letting the public know, but there's still a lot that don't have that access either or don't get the paper. So I think we need to do as much as we can to keep the community informed about what we're doing.
Sorry, I didn't even start with a motion, and I'm sorry about that, to bring us into discussion. Yes.
I might, I might add, it kind of bleeds through probably several of these, and not necessarily anyone is, is our administrative structure. And just to review of that, I'm not sure if I have strong feelings about it, but I know that two board members that have moved on, left the board, mentioned it in, in retrospect. And so I think, you know, our administrative structure is essentially the same as it's been for several decades, if not longer. And I'm, and I don't want to say more than that because I don't want to prejudice my thinking or others' thinking about what that means. But just, just in general terms, what the, what the report relationship is in terms of structure. And with that, I'll just leave it be because that's, would go into the solution or the matrix, metrics a little more than I want to.
I have some discussion items, but do we want a motion and second?
Yeah, let's do that, please.
I move adaption of the school board goals for the 2022-23 school year.
Yep, looking for a second.
I second.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Terry. Now we can talk about that.
So my, one concern I have with this is on one B, developing a common language. And then it says, starting by building an identity around the Bobcat Way, which I have no idea what the Bobcat Way is. And so we want to improve communications, but we mentioned something, you know, we said last meeting, we have so many acronyms and this and that. So I don't really understand what we mean by the Bobcat Way. And also with that, I don't have any objections to a monthly column, but it's a monthly column for where, who, what?
That was just a suggestion that maybe we need to, as a board, like a monthly column in the paper, that would just give a little outline of some of the things that we're doing. But that's just a suggestion. I just thought it's another tool that we can use for communication. It shouldn't be personal perspective. It should be businesslike in terms of its, in terms of its focus. But again, that's just a suggestion that would help with communication.
In number two, I'm all for us getting into the schools more often. I've appreciated the invitations this week for, to, to do things in the school. I've really appreciated that. I like this idea of breakfast, you know, going to the schools and, and, and being there and visiting about things. So I really like that. And then I think two, on number three and four, we're in the middle of that. And, and those are quite obvious and logical now. But outside of those, I, I like having some goals. I think also one of our goals at a board should be to kind of what Wes was leading into with our administrative structure and evaluation there and looking, because that is one of our responsibilities. So I think that, that is, should be one of our big goals as well.
I think, Teresa, just to answer your question about the Bobcat Way, and I'm going to make, I don't know that I have this quite right, but I know we talked about this last year, that, that would be, we want to build that identity of the Bobcat Way. We don't have anything in place at the present time, but that was the idea, that we build an identity around that, that terminology, the Bobcat Way. What is the Bobcat Way? What does that represent in our district and in our schools?
Like a, the culture, building of a culture.
Right.
I think is what I remember from the principal's meeting that we did all together as a group coming from.
Rick Melmer.
Sometimes when you misplace something, you go looking for it, you find other things in your stacks. And that was the case this morning when I looked, found the, or saw my document, our document relative to the future plan, next year's budget plan. And so that's something I think we need to take a really hard look at this time. Two new board members, what is our, what are our financial goals and the parameters? I think the word is the parameters that we want, we'll be using for our next budget year. There's a lot of moving parts out there. Compensation of staff has been at one of our, one of our focuses, but that in addition to other things that are, that we need to focus on. So the budget parameters that we'll probably be looking at in February, no later than March, as we plan the year. Now, this doesn't set the budget, just sets the, the outline of what we want to accomplish with our, with. So that's, that's something that I think also fits right in here.
Number four, yeah.
Yeah. And I know that the Finance Committee did that in the past, had budget parameters that we were working with. And I, I liked that because it gave us a framework with which to work. Do I hear?
And that is an item, if I might add, and I'm chair. That's an item that we can get really good input from our, our leadership, our ministry of leadership, our principals and other program leaders in terms of our budget parameters, because that's their opportunity to speak up and say, this is, this is what we feel is our need or where our next best dollar should go from their individual or collective point of view.
Okay. So am I hearing we like goals one, two, three, four? And Wes had suggested a goal, the Brookings School District Board of Education will evaluate our administrative structure.
Yeah, I had a question on four C.
Well, I was just wondering if, do we need to have all these A, Bs and Cs underneath it? Because I think that's where we're coming from, all these different ideas, is that we just need a kind of these overarching focus areas instead of having the things to check up.
Well, the concern, the complaint we had in the past was we had those overarching ones, but then we didn't have the bullets to do it. But maybe our bullets are too broad. Maybe we need to get them narrowed down. Because I would, four C, I'm like, we develop a strategy for equity across the district. I mean, that's a very wonderful goal, lofty goal. But how are we going to accomplish that? Is that going to be part of our strategic plan? What, you know, it seems to me that that's a really difficult one to accomplish.
Correct.
And we can have the strategy, but if that doesn't lead to equity, then we have to evaluate those results. So I, I think some of them are, are very difficult to measure.
Is why I shared I'm excited about our strategic plan. And then just working these, with that is where I've been stuck on the confusion.
What if we were to, you know, have our four major goals?
Yep.
And then maybe have two things underneath each one instead of, like we've got, I think we have too many things that we're expecting to do, maybe one or two under each one. It doesn't mean we can't do other things or we wouldn't continue to pursue other things that are to benefit of our, of our district. But I think if we want to really measure it, that would be the next step is to really look at what are those things going to be that we can actually measure?
Would the board entertain approving the four and the additional one Wes shared and not worrying about the sub-point language? And then having that be something that we continue to work on, getting monthly bulleted items that focus on our goal statements?
I would be in favor of that. I, I think the four major goals are great. I mean, I think they're appropriate and I think they are well-written.
Does he, okay?
And we're adding five administrative structures.
That's what the board would like to do. Okay. So Deb, back to friendly amendments. Can you friendly amend your original motion for the additional goal and then the four main goal areas, removing the sub items?
Sure. I move approval of the board goals for 22-23, using the four major goals that were identified and with the addition of a fifth, which is to review the administrative structure of the district.
Terry, are you okay with that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, Brian, I think we're ready for that vote. And I have that fifth written out if you need it, Brian. Okay. Yep. All right. Motion passes. Thank you for everyone's patience there. I know that hasn't been the cleanest item this year. All right. Dr. Willert has uploaded a document sharing his superintendent goals for the 2022-2023 school year. And you can see those three noted there. For the public, the goals listed are, one, competency-based learning. A, no later than June, unless you're uploading this, Brian, to the screen or no? Okay. No later than June 2023, the superintendent will present an implementation framework, timeline and plan to transition the Brookings School District to a complete competency-based system of education for board consideration. Two, strategic plan, the superintendent will present a district-wide strategic plan with the metrics to the board for consideration and approval no later than May of 2023. Three, school safety, the superintendent will coordinate school safety teams to begin establishing common practices and language related to ALIS processes and protocols throughout the Brookings School District. So I'm looking for a motion of approval. In a second, we can then discuss.
I move approval of the superintendent goals.
I will second that so we can move into discussion.
Discussion on that area.
I would like to see a date in that last one, too. The other two have dates for when the completion will be ready to share. And I think we should have that for the last one as well.
I was under the impression, and when I think back to the last time I was on the school board, which was 20 some years ago, I, I thought the board set the goals for the superintendent and not that the superintendent sent their own goals. Or am I, Wes was around at that time too, or am I just not remembering correctly? Or it was kind of a cooperative deal, a mutual thing?
More of a, a planning effort, more of a joint, joint effort. And so my answer would be that probably we need to prove this, but with the, understand that we add to the, add to the goals. I, I think in terms of areas, in terms of mental health of our students and things along that line, that we are, we have never, we've had reports on it and we, bringing back to surveys and whatever else. And that has to be a priority somewhere along the line in terms of our organizational goals, whether it's here or some other setting, in our financial plan, whatever, we need to address some of those issues. I'm not going to go into them now, but we, we, you all know what references we're making to what we can do organizationally to improve area of our education.
So Wes and Kelly, were you?
I agree with you, I agree with you, Teresa. I would say yes, no, more yes in terms of effort that we need to put into this.
That was my question, were the two of you involved in the development or assist, you know, were you kind a part of the discussion?
We have not discussed this in great depth, more as, I think Dr. Willert's goal is to have it more aligned to the board goals.
Yeah, which makes sense.
And have the, the pieces together. And then these would be some additional items along with the board goals.
Yes. And so along with the board goals, communication was a big one that we had and that came out in our workshop from August.
And is coming out from our strategic plan work.
And I would like to see that that is a goal, that we're sure that the superintendent is responding to requests from the board, the administrative team, the BEA, city officials in a timely manner, to be sure that things are always moving in the, in the proper direction. And so I would really like to see that, that one added.
Okay. Just communication. And remember, we're not doing complete personnel discussions, but just that communication overall.
I think that's very important.
Okay. Yep.
I'm, I'm going to go on a limb here a little bit, and that is that we approve these, but we continue discussion that is led by the board chair and, and one, one other, one other board member joined you as vice chair. I'm not, I'm not saying it's me, use your judgment, who it would be. Continue discussion with Dr. Willert in terms of, of the goals, to put a little, some, some other items on the table. Relative to how we expect this organization to serve our students.
Okay.
That, I would kind of have it on two parts. We approve this, but continue it all, continue the discussion relative. And then we set a date, we set a deadline of the January board meeting, which I don't think is unreasonable. And some of this stuff's going to carry over to a subsequent cycle.
And, and I believe it's very important that the goals that are set relate to the evaluation that is done and that they're connected. And, and that, so I just want to be sure that, I, I think they should all be incorporated together.
Yep, I agree with that. Okay. So I hear that we're going to continue working on this, with this as a baseline of our starting approval. Correct? No, I don't think we're, we're not amending. We're just kind of adding to, adding items and then following up with a deadline and then also some additional work in January.
Looking for words that might, for motion or repeat the motion, maybe you repeat it.
Yeah, Deb, you can repeat the motion.
I moved approval of the superintendent goals, the broad goals for 22-23 school year with the idea that we will continue to work on them.
Work on them.
Yep.
As we progress. And the board goals as well. I think that monthly kind of talk. And then.
I will second that.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Brian. All right, motion passes. All right. Now we are moving on to the building construction budget scope. And I'm going to make a motion based on the superintendent's recommendation of the approval of the building construction budget scope estimated at 65.5 million to be funded from bond proceeds and capital outlay certificates. And I'm looking for a second. Okay. You keep forgetting to put your microphone on. Sorry. Wes.
I, I move to approve the proposed building, construction budget.
Yep. Okay. So moved by me, seconded by Wes. Any more discussion from the board? Brian, anything else to add? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, congratulations, everyone, thank you. Lighting things ahead. All right, we were adding an item to add a second meeting in December, just to continue work on our goals and continue work on our facility discussions. Even though we like to just usually do one meeting in December for the holidays, we got a lot on our plates, so. Our scheduled meeting is the December 12th.
Oh, something that week, because it might, something might emerge from the board meeting, that Wednesday or Thursday, your classes are over by that time, Terry, or you're still?
So, what would the 14th at noon look like for people?
And that would be good because we have a finance subcommittee meeting on the 9th. Is that related to this, Wes? Extra meeting?
Over my book.
Yep. Do we want, and I mean, if we have a noon meeting that kind of restricts the, yeah, the public from attending, is there, do we want to do an evening meeting? I was thinking Thursday, the 15th is a possibility.
We can do that. We have a facilities meeting that day from 1 to 4. That gets a little long, and kiddos are out, I'm afraid. You do, okay. Maybe we can have Amanda try to get us situated that, for a second meeting in December.
The week of the 12th.
The week of the 12th. Okay. So adding a second meeting the week of the 12th. Looking, do we get a motion for that? Are we in? Yeah.
So I would move to approve having a second meeting in December, and Amanda to send out a poll to see when the actual date would be. Second.
Okay. All right, and we're ready for that. So we have, for the public, probably looking at the 13th or 14th or 15th of that week. I'm sorry, we don't have the date for you yet, but we'll get that out shortly.
I think I'm going to have to do a verbal.
Okay.
It's showing it hasn't been approved yet. Apologize.
That's fine, no, we added it, it's just fine.
Want to just do all yes, or I can do a roll call?
Yep, you can do all yes.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm going to motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Good job, all right. Moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes. Thank you for taking time at the different time of the day, everybody, appreciate that.